Thank you for coming to the school committee meeting. Let's start with the Pledge of Allegiance.
(Inaudible) of the United States of America and to the Republic of which stands, one nation under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
I actually went one minute early there. Control room's probably yelling at me. Comments from community? Anybody here want to address the school committee? Room is packed, but don't see anybody. So we'll start with our student representatives and start with Isabel. Plymouth North.
Hi. So the Plymouth North and South High Schools are inviting all college-bound students to attend the College Fair. We'll have over 135 colleges, universities, and armed services. It's Tuesday, October 18th, from 6:00 to 8:00 in the Plymouth North Gymnasium. We have National Testing Day where we have the SAT, PSAT, and then PSAT 8 and 9 on Wednesday, October 19th. So grade 12s will be taking the SATs. The auditions for Les Miserables will be on Wednesday, October 19th, and Thursday, October 20th. Life Touch Sports Pictures will be taken Friday, October 21st, after school in the gym. And then picture retakes are Thursday, November 3rd during K Block. Students eligible to vote are encouraged to see social studies teachers for a photo registration form, and you must be registered by October 19th in order to vote in the presidential election. The application for the President's Volunteer Service Award is November 8th. And then MCAS parent reports were mailed home on Friday, September 30th, with results from May and June MCAS testing. And then MCAS retest will be in November. On Thursday, October 20th, bus passes will be distributed. And then on Wednesday, October 19th, we'll have a club and activities fair. So anyone who's interested in joining club or activity will be able to attend. And our Senior Athletes of the Week are Jake Burkhead for football and Samantha Carden for cross-country. And then there's also a FAFSA night. So you're not able to, you're able to fill out the FAFSA now, it's open October 1st. And then on Tuesday, October 25th, we'll have a FAFSA night at Plymouth North from 5:00 to 8:00 to learn more about that.
Thank you. And Brianna for South.
So our sports are continuing to strengthen after a slow start. Golf was the first team to make tourney, and football won their first game on Saturday. Homecoming is this Saturday, and our homecoming game is against Pembroke at 7:00 o'clock on Friday. Tickets for homecoming will be on sale this week at Lunches for $10. The court was announced on Thursday. The nominees for Homecoming King are James Addison, Bobby Colbert, Sam Ferreira, Cam Hunter, and Dylan Ketterer. The nominees for Homecoming Queen are Jaden Andrews, Rachel Bond, Laura Francis, Emily Hoare, and myself. Permission slips for the Fall CMAS Student Council Field Trip are due tomorrow and must be turned in to Ms. King with $30. The National Honor Society is currently selling Christmas wreaths. Make sure you find a student if you would like to purchase one for the upcoming holiday season. On Friday, seniors took part in Oktoberfest. We started the day off with a hypnotist show that was extremely entertaining and finished by going outside and playing long games. It was a great opportunity for our class to bond with one another. This past weekend was the annual Sam Frye Road Race sponsored by the Booster Club. It was a huge success, and lots of money was raised for scholarships. On Wednesday, Plymouth South will be having a school-wide testing day. Sophomores and juniors will be taking the PSAT, while seniors will be taking the SAT with the SA. On the same day, all freshmen will be traveling to the Museum of Science for a field trip. If seniors wish to get dismissed after the SAT, they must have a note from their parents come into the office by tomorrow. Once again, we encourage all prospective juniors and seniors to attend the College Fair at North tomorrow night. This evening will start at 6:00 PM, and is a great opportunity to explore post-secondary education options. In order to get students in the mindset of what comes after high school, all staff are asked to wear their post-secondary education T-shirts tomorrow as well. On Thursday, October 20th, the Student Council's Executive Board will be traveling to College of the Holy Cross for a day filled with leadership training. October 27th will be our Vocational Technical Advisory Dinner. Representatives from all texts will be present at this event. And lastly, EDTV has recently released some new footage of the construction site for Plymouth South. The structure looks bigger and better each and every day, and I'm really jealous I can't go.
Good luck. I saw the video of that. I actually shared it, got a lot of responses. Everybody's really excited about that. It's a nice video. The drones are getting some great shots. Very good. Thank you, both of you. Old business. Anybody have any updates for anything in old business? I just did a quick scan. I don't think we have anything. New business. Anybody have anything they want to bring up in new business? Okay. Then we're ready for the superintendent's report. Dr. Myast.
Yes, tonight I have two things to report. The first one is in reference to the district review that we'll be going through later this school year. Just want to keep the school committee informed that they will be part of that process. So you will have the opportunity to provide input through the process in the form of survey and possible sit-down interviews. So you will be invited to be part of that process as well. So we will be working with you to schedule things and actually send you email to be able to be part of that through interviews. They'll have some level of responses that they would like from you. The next thing I have to report on is pretty exciting for Plymouth. I'm not sure how many of you have watched on the news where there was a football field in northern Massachusetts that was destroyed by a community fair. And that that field was a turf field, and there was significant damage to that field, close to $1 million in damage. And the Massachusetts State Championships for MICA marching band was scheduled to be on that field for this next weekend. We've been working with the MICA organizers, and that competition is actually be at Plymouth North on Sunday. So we'll have bands that will be 28 bands. The UMass marching band will be performing at 12 and 6:15. The UMass marching band has a number of alumni on the band. Our Plymouth band will be performing about midway through the first section, which should be before noon. But there will be 28 bands starting performances at 10 and ending at 6:30. So it should be a very eventful day. Lot of planning. This happened from Friday to this morning. So it should be a very, very event-filled day. People that love marching band music, it's unbelievable. You'll see the best bands, and it's pretty amazing what it takes to put on one of these competitions. But we've been working with the organizers, Ms. Holmes and Mr. Capel, and I met with about eight people today just getting things squared away for that. So that's my report tonight.
Dr. Sorensen.
I think that, I think it's wonderful. I saw a video of that field, the damage to that field. It was horrendous. So I was, and I was actually wondering how events were going to take place after that. So I'm really glad that we've been able to step up and provide.
Dr. Sorensen, I'd like to follow up to that. And I think, you know, a lot of people ask us, well, why do we have turf or facility managers? Why do we have the policy that we do? I think the example of, we want to take care of our fields and we want to monitor it. The amount of people that will be watching and watching over this is incredible, from police details to facility managers, custodial support. There'll probably be 100 volunteers on campus from different bands. So it's a good point to bring up that what we're able to accommodate and help bring some great music to Plymouth. And they came, they sought out Plymouth. They said, we've heard about your place, we've actually had people play there, and they thought it would be a great venue to have this competition.
Excellent.
Okay. So.
I went to the one last year. If you haven't had a chance, it's really, and this one's going to be massive.
It's massive. It's the biggest one in the state.
Yeah. It's really well done. Thank you.
And that's it. Thank you.
And now retirements.
Yes, we have one retirement that'll be happening later this year. Jeanne Norton Ryan from Indian Brook, an elementary art teacher.
I'm moving.
Ms. Badger.
Okay, sorry. I was waiting for my cue, sorry. On behalf of the Plymouth Public Schools, I'd like to thank Ms. Norton Ryan for 30 years of service to the district and wish her a happy retirement.
Very good. And now Ms. Badger, if you'd also do correspondence?
Yes. There's one correspondence tonight, a letter from Mayor Ter Sawa. I'd say his first name, but I'd probably, Kara, I don't know.
Did well with that.
Of Shishikahama, Japan, expressing his gratitude for the grand welcome of the Shishikahama visiting group for the summer. Mayor Tersha, oh my god, I did it with Ter, Tersha, wow, I got it once. What was it?
Ter Sawa.
Ter Sawa.
The mayor.
The mayor, yes. Noted a bit of nostalgia since he hadn't been to Plymouth in 19 years, expressing his appreciation for heartfelt hospitality of the Plymouth community. He mentioned how much he looks forward to the future sister-city exchanges about their new school-based globalization program. He thanked us for a splendid week and said that it is truly, truly unforgettable and invaluable time for the children himself. The mayor indicated the pride that the people of Shishikahama have in regarding the sister-city relationship and how they look forward to continue the relationship for many years.
Very good. Thank you. And now we're ready for our program update. And we have our science coordinator, Mrs. Allison Riordan.
All the chairs are there too. Eager to go. Eager to go. Hi, everybody. How are you?
Right. How you doing?
I'm okay, thanks. All good? Okay. So I'm here to do my program update. I pick October, I guess. I'm lucky, I get to go first. A lot of things are going on. To start with is change. We finally had our new framework adopted in April, and that was very exciting because we finally, after nine years, the state had a new framework in science. And the new framework, as we have been working with our teachers over the last few years on a draft version of that, really changes the way that we've taught science. And that is, can be difficult for some. It is moving from factual-based information, and old standards started with explain, differentiate. It was very much, you could do it with paper and pencil. And that was the expectation of the state, and they had teased out skills of inquiry, experimentation, and design into a separate section. Well, the new framework really puts the two together and meshes them so you can barely see any boundaries between the two. And so our teachers really need to now step it up in terms of engaging in argument with evidence, communicating with evidence, using informational text. And those three items right there, the connections to literacy are astounding, using computational thinking and other mathematical skills. So there's a lot of cross-curricular connections that can be had. And then in addition to that, planning and carrying out investigations. Students can carry out investigations, but the carrying out part, I'm sorry, the planning part can be difficult, especially when we're talking about getting students as young as kindergarten to do this. So it's a challenge. So that's where we are. We're in our transition. Like I said, we started a few years ago in looking at the draft document and kind of coming up with a plan as to how we would approach that. We have an end goal right now, and I have that in the graphic up there, that the state assessment in grades five and eight, the MCAS for science, will be totally transitioned in 2019, and that includes computer-based testing as well. You may hear things about MCAS 2.0 and ELA and math being computer-based. This year, science will not be computer-based this year. It will be paper and pencil. There is no transition plan at this present time in place for high school biology, or the high school MCAS, which our district does biology. There is no plan in place. The Board of Education has yet to put forth any actions with regards to the transition, and I believe they're just kind of hanging back and waiting and seeing how some of the early stages of MCAS 2.0 go for ELA and math. And then potentially, science will follow suit because it is a competency determination for graduation. So as of right now, and that is important in our transition, I'm going to skip ahead for one second just because I'm on that point. We've transitioned to the new framework in elementary. We've transitioned to the new framework in middle school. And in high school doesn't get a check because biology is still hanging back. We have transitioned in earth science, chemistry, and physics. Our AP courses wouldn't transition because they are on the college board, not on the state framework. And our electives will transition next summer. It was just a matter of how much work could we do in the time that we've had. So we're getting there with high school, and like I said, biology will just sit and wait until further notice from the state. If we go back, and this is what I was mentioning to you before about the practices, this is something where it's retraining our staff. And so I've taken that upon, taken that challenge upon myself, and it's working with the staff whenever we get the opportunity to teach them, first of all, at K through 12, what is a model? What is a model in science? And asking that question, what is their misconceptions when it comes to what a model is? And is the globe, when you put a globe of the earth in front of a high school student, it's a pretty accurate model because there's context for that student. They understand what the earth is, they understand what the parts of that globe is. But if you put that same globe in front of a third grader, it may not be a model. And it may not be a model because they don't have that context. So making points like that to staff and really emphasizing again and again what that means, and then not just making a model or producing a model, but actually using that model. How do you then peer-evaluate each other's models? How can one student question another student's model and its validity in actually demonstrating a concept? So these are the types of things that we're working on with the staff. And so it is, practice makes perfect. It is, we're working hard toward that. Gravity is gravity, doesn't change. Apple still falls from the tree. So the content piece is not as much of a factor in this transition to the new framework as much as the practices are. Clearly, there are some new concepts for some teachers that need to be done at second grade. I've had the conversation with second-grade teachers all over the district about differences between lakes and ponds, and what's the scientific difference? And if you live in Plymouth, good luck, because everything is a pond, but there is a scientific definition. So working with teachers to actually understand the scientific definition behind that is, it can be challenging. And so that's the kind of feedback that I need from staff. You know, I could provide science, you know, ad nauseam, but if they're more forward with, you know, I really don't know this, I really don't know that, we can really provide some more targeted PD, which is what we're trying to do. The planetarium beyond curriculum enrichment. So as you know, we were very lucky to receive a project via town meeting last April, and Mr. Costin and I have been working diligently in this process. We did go out to bid, and we needed to go back out to bid again. So we are in that second round of processes. It just didn't, our minimum expectations were not met in that first round, so that's why we're going back out. So in the meantime, Mr. Costin and I decided that we would, we were tabling. So just so you know, my planetarium program provider left at the end of the school year. He left just because he was a young guy who needed a full-time job, and it was a part-time job. So he left and took a full-time position in Carver, running their planetarium and teaching physics over there. And it just so happened that the man who retired from that position was available. And so in recent weeks, I've hired Mr. Davies to provide some programs to our students because our planetarium works. It's not that it's not working. We had not moved forward with hiring somebody full-time for the part-time position yet because we really wanted to see what was the final product that's in the planetarium, just in terms of qualifications. It might be Mac-based, it might be PC-based. So we kind of want to see what our final product is before we make a final decision on that. So Mr. Davies is in there temporarily, and he's going to start programs pretty soon because if you are aware, Carver has the exact same planetarium equipment in their district as we do. So his learning curve is no time whatsoever. So we will begin programs probably within the next couple of weeks. And like I said, Mr. Costin and I are carefully considering all of the proposals that are coming in, and we hope to have that work done this academic year. I like this. Thumbs up to everything I do right. So, you know, we offer a lot of opportunities, and those opportunities that we have recently offered have gotten great reviews. We have great approval with what we've been doing. Biomedical program is astounding. You know, I've said it, and I continue to say it, exceeds all of my expectations. We have currently 121 students in the freshman program across the district, and we have 84 sophomores across the district. And we started, you know, we probably lost the most people that will leave, that will lose in that program between freshman and sophomore years. I would not anticipate that 84 population going down much further between now and graduation just because at this point, they're kind of settled, they know what they're doing, and they love the second course, the human bodies course. If you get a chance to check it out, it's a pretty neat course. We try to tweet it as much as possible. The students are learning all the body systems in concert with one another, and they just, they eat it up. Every day you're in there, they're just super excited to be there. So that program is going astoundingly well. Will continue, we're going to run the same acceptance timeline as CVTE will in the springtime, winter-spring. So Mr. Han and I are working along. So applications will go out at the same time, and applications will come back at the same time, and decision letters will be mailed at the same time as well for both programs. The Elementary Robotics Rally, I know some of you attended that. We, you know, we took it over last year, Julia Colby and I, and we really changed kind of the nature behind the event. So in the past, it was really a competition. Students went and competed, and there wasn't much else for them to do. We really made it into a really great evening-long event. And so students came, and they certainly competed on stage, but in addition to that, they got to go down and visit Mr. Bastoni's engineering lab. And they got to do some activities on code.org, and they got to check out some high school students that were running their own robots. And we had several different stations, and students went around, and they had passports so they could get them signed and stamped, and they were building newspaper towers. And they were just very active in what they were doing, and we had great feedback from advisors, from students, from parents. So we intend on doing a similar event this year. Again, that's in March. And we are looking, I'm in the process of trying to search for grant funding or additional funding for equipment upgrade. The equipment that we currently use for the robotics program is, it services approximately 300 to 350 students, depending on the year. And unfortunately, the version of LEGO robotics that we currently use is no longer being sold by LEGO. So unfortunately, that means that we can't build the program. And if anything breaks, our program will unfortunately get smaller. So I know I've run a GoFundMe proposal by Dr. Campbell, and so I will be completing that and getting that out there. And I've launched grants, and so we'll see. We'll see what we get. But hopefully that.
How much do we need to upgrade?
It's $38,000. And I did actually get a $1,000 award from the Plymouth Ed Foundation. And so we will pilot a small program in one of the schools that only has a few teams. We have that equipment. But again, we're not going to make, we're not going to have them come to the district-wide competition just because it's, we want the same opportunity for all students at all schools. So we'll, you know, we'll continue to make it work until then. And then Camp Invention, again, due to the support from Dr. Campbell's office, that program, we have sold out three years in a row. It is, it is just a great, successful, week-long program that kids love coming to. You know, they come in the morning and they are jumping to get into the door of PCIS here. And we have a great staff that run it, and what the kids can invent and come up with, and what they take apart and repurpose from a computer printer, or a monitor, or a keyboard, and they can harvest an LED light out of an alarm clock and turn it into part of their matchbox car, is pretty remarkable for kids in first through sixth grade. So we've had other great success with the Ocean Drifter program. My departments really kind of come together with social media, and they're really supporting one another and getting the word out as to what they're doing. So that's been great in that regard. And then, you know, I say the best is yet to come because once this MCAS transition is through, the program, the goals of what we're trying to do really come together with this idea from the framework of rigor, relevance, and coherence. So with rigor, we're bringing the content and the practices together and really focusing on the relevance, which is the phenomena. This is, this is the stuff that kids wonder about. This is what I, time and time again, is, I'm explaining to staff exactly what are kids wondering about. We do I-wonder, I-learns, we do this KWL. We do all these different strategies to find out what kids know before we teach them, and then we use that what they know to try to direct what we're doing, answer their questions. You know, for instance, you know, mom and dad tell me to eat because I'm going to grow and I need energy, but the plant next to me is growing and it's not eating. Why is that? And I wonder about that, and I want to know why that is. It's that type of questioning and the phenomena that is really driving what we're trying to do, rather than a typical egg drop. And I know you've all at one point seen an egg drop, and it's great, and you can protect an egg, and there's a lot of great physics applications there. At the same time, rather than framing it in terms of an egg drop, we can frame it in terms of how to get supplies to a community affected by Ebola, when you can't visit them in person. And so framing it in that type of questioning that kids wonder about, you know, they may sit and not tell you in person, but this is what they're sitting and wondering about when they see the news, when they look outside. It's that type of connection that we're trying to make for the students. And then the coherence is making sure that it makes sense, K through 12, obviously, and that what we're doing in the earlier grades supports middle school and high school. So some of the other things that are up there, there is a real focus on science inquiry. The mannequins I mentioned to you with the human body systems, you'll see pictures all over Twitter of students and these three-feet-high little mannequin men, and they are making all the different human body systems out of clay. So the students are sculpting muscles out of clay, and the brain out of clay, and adding them to this. And it's really just an amazing thing. Our faculty outreach and what our faculty are doing in November at our Choice in Service, the community has been so incredibly supportive. We have teachers that are going to be going to the Whale and Dolphin Conservation Society, NUKA Research, Omni Robotics in Rainham. They're going to be traveling to Wildlands Trust, they're going to be going to the Pine Barrens Alliance. So our high school staff are really getting out and kind of seeing the science practices in action and gladly bringing that back to their classroom. The new school, obviously, South High, you are all well aware, our butterfly garden that we're working on, great news at town meeting about Mass Ottermont and Tidmarsh Farm. You know, they were kind of a long time ago bringing in and willing to donate items to the new school and the grounds there. So we've been working with them now for about a year, year and a half now, I think. Career Fair is something we're adding this year. We're adding that to the biomedical program. There is a real focus on careers in that freshman course, but actually bringing people to the school that can interact with the students in a fair-type environment is what we're going to try to do in the springtime as well. Scrubs, we really want to acknowledge what the kids have done in Project Lead the Way in their first two years, so somehow getting them a scrubs top or something in going into their third year of the program as just a show of their commitment, we're trying to work on as well. Hospital Adventures will be in the third year of the program and working with BID Plymouth on that. And that's something that, again, we started a few years ago. First LEGO League is a program that, we have a technology engineering teacher at the middle school who is being supported by Mr. Palladino here at PCIS in an after-school setting to try to see how that works. It's like an official Mr. Bastoni's Robotics Competitions. It's designed for middle school, and it's actually sponsored by LEGO. There's a pretty significant financial commitment there, but Mr. Palladino is helping that out. So we'll see how it goes, and if we want to get into it further. We model our elementary program after that. We use all their resources online. So we kind of just want to see what it kind of just want to see what it has to offer a middle school student and if it's worth getting engaged in that level or doing something homegrown on our own. And then, finally, citizen science is something that I'm really pushing K through 12. And that is, you know, demonstrating for students how the public can be involved in science and talking to teachers at all levels. You know, for instance, Project Budburst. Project Budburst is a national program that students can go out in the springtime and they can observe, you know, for instance, on the New Indian Brook Nature Trail. They could go out there and they could observe when things bud for the first time. And then, they go to a database online and they just input that data. But what does that data do? Like, how is that used? You know, if you ever plant seeds in your garden, you know, the growth charts on the back, like, does it grow in springtime, et cetera? That information is all tied into that. But, you know, impressing upon students that citizens are doing this and they're collecting the data because you couldn't have this giant research facility that could do this everywhere in the United States. So, how does that work? It's those types of projects that we're really emphasizing with teachers this year to make it all kind of work. And I just want to end by actually thanking all of you. And I did tweet it out in advance of this meeting. You know, as a result of the support you've given us for the biomedical program and other programs, we've, the science program has really flourished. So, I thank you for that because if we didn't have the extra money in Project Lead the Way, we obviously would not have been able to do that. So, thank you. And that's all I have.
Very good. Very good. Anybody have any questions or comments?
May I? Could you go back one slide?
Yeah, absolutely. Potentially.
I think, as we all know, neuroscience has advanced so much in the last decade because of the technology. We know so, so much more now about neuronal development. And this rigor, relevance, and coherence model, I think is fascinating because we know that humans learn through assimilation and accommodation. You know, first, we learn something and then, as we, our brain develops, we realize what we've learned is immature and we have to learn something on top of that and then assimilate both things to make the new learning. And I love this progressive storyline thing because I think that's exactly what that is. A child may start with a small sense of gravity, using your example, that an apple falls from a tree, but learns that if I look on the space shuttle, things don't fall down. So, how do I take my old learning and mix it with my new learning to come up with a new assimilation? I think that's a really, really effective way.
These three factors really form, they form the vision for the new framework for the state. And it's, the new framework is a progression of learning. And that is something that the state is asking us to really be clear on is that this is not a spiral curriculum. A spiral curriculum is, for instance, when you take a concept and you learn a little bit about it here and a little bit about it there and a little bit about it there. It's the same thing you're learning, you're just learning it in a more advanced way. Where a progression of learning is, you learn the concept at this age when it's developmentally appropriate. And then, when you get older, you learn the next more difficult concept part of that. It's a completely new concept. For instance, life cycles is now at third grade and that moves into inheritance at fourth grade. And you can't understand inheritance without life cycles, but the expectation is that in third grade, they're developmentally appropriate for that. In fourth grade, they may not be. So, the framework is very abstract, much more abstract in middle school, and it's much more tangible in elementary than it's ever been for that same reason.
Thank you.
Mr. Begley, one thing if you don't mind, I just wanted to thank Allison on behalf of Plymouth South, the New South. I started laughing about the butterflies. We're going to have a butterfly area, which is wonderful. But we get a lot of, I get a lot of questions daily, weekly on the science labs, which are unbelievable. And I just have to send an email from the architects that I have no idea the answer. And Allison responds in a minute. And I think she's Tom Finnickens first. She's definitely his favorite in the district.
He's my favorite.
But it is remarkable, the attention, the efficiency, and the thinking outside the box. I mean, I never thought we'd have this butterfly garden that, is that what we're calling it? I forget what we're calling it.
We can call whatever we want.
Allison went out with one of the teachers who put it in her SMART goals. It was just, it was like professional development is at best and it's happening. And there's a space and the architects have, but she has just done unbelievable work. I haven't answered one question about science labs.
We're trying to plan an event for the springtime with the planting at the new building where Tidmarsh Farm is involved. If they spoke at all at town meeting, I didn't catch it all. Forgive me. But they're involved heavily with MIT and researchers there as well. And one of our teachers at South High has been very involved with them and that organization. So, it's nice. We can get environmental club involved. We can get AP Biology involved. But at the exact same time, we were very thoughtful in where we placed these garden-type environments. And they do fall in the area between both the middle school and the high school because there are a great number of learning standards in the middle school that do tie to these areas as well. So, that would kind of bring the classroom outside.
That's excellent. I have to say that your presentations, I look forward to every time I see you in the audience, I'm like, yes, I like it. And I like this new template you're using.
Thanks.
It was very clean and tight.
I thank Emily Gunnan for that. So-
It's very nice, Emily. It's a good template. Very well done.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Enjoy your evening.
You too.
Sorry, I just realized I wasn't synced.
I was trying to move it, but it was not moving as quickly as I wanted it to.
Now, we have the new org chart. Dr. Miestis?
Yes, tonight, we have, for your review, the organizational chart that we updated. And this is just an update. There aren't any structural changes. So, you can take a look at it and you can see we've, we felt it was important to take note to the changes of administration position and also school committee positions. And this is on tonight. And this is, again, our official flow chart, our organizational chart of how the district operates. So, this is on here tonight and this is an action item.
Anybody have any questions?
My middle initial is wrong. It's not S, it's C. I don't know if we can make a correction on that.
We can definitely do that.
If needed, that would be great. Thank you.
You sure don't want to change it to S? We can make it.
And Dr. Campbell is responsible for a lot of stuff.
A lot of people.
You have a whole page to yourself there.
A lot of people that, nope, takes a village.
Oh, here it is. Very good. So, this is an action item. So, do I have a motion?
Yeah, I was just-
You have a question for it?
Yeah. I was wondering on the first chart, it has names. And so, the names will change all the time?
They do, they do change and they have changed based on reorganization and also based on election.
Okay.
Or-
Sometimes, sometimes an organizational chart doesn't have the names of the person who'd be the job. You see what I'm saying? That's what I've been used to.
Yeah, I think one of the reasons why we did this is so people can actually know who to go to.
Yeah, yeah. I think it makes sense, but it's just different for me.
Dr. Campbell would like his name to stay in that position there.
Yeah, I prefer to have my name.
Just a quick question about data management was placed under Ms. Frye. That surprised me a little bit. Maybe you want to comment on that?
Yeah. When you take a look at the data that we submit to the Department of Education, it's really significantly connected to our employees and certification, our employees and updating of that information. And it's really relative to the operations and all the different people that work under the data management actually work closely with human resources. So, we felt that was a good connection. And actually have somebody that is, you know, in central office that could be really connected with that program.
Okay. And the reason why I asked the question, there's so much of the data that we send on to the powers that be, wherever they are, is about students.
Yeah.
About, you know, how many minorities, how many, you know, that is all under human res-
That the Office of Collecting Their Information, I think the management is under the Human Resources Assistant Superintendent. But you have to understand that they work closely with all of us. I think they just report to, they do report just to the assistant-
Because I think if we could just give it to Dr. Campbell, I mean-
Yeah, yeah. Well, just joking.
We all spend time with-
Yeah.
We do.
Yeah, it's-
A lot of time on HR, for sure.
It's amazing how much we do, we're developing a new hiring workflow all through Aspen. The evaluation system is now all in Aspen. So, I was even shocked this summer, just my short time, and the amount that the HR staff work with. One of our employees is a data person. All the column and lane changes, the staff attendance management, the sick time, maternity leaves, all interchange with that operating system. So, I was surprised too, but-
And one thing that might help Dr. Sorenson draw the connection, we've really gone away from some subsidiary programs that we were using and we've actually folded all those programs into Aspen, which is one source of grabbing information. So, it really, even our substitute calling system used to be an external program. It's now an Aspen. So, I think there are so many overlapping features that we use Aspen for, from HR to, you know, the substitutes to student information. It's really becoming our warehouse. So, there is a great connection with the amount of things that are happening with HR. But I think the other compelling piece is really having somebody that's that go-to person at central office that they can really work with.
All right. Thank you.
Any further question?
No, I just want to move it.
Go right ahead, Mrs. Perkins.
Okay. I'd like to move that we approve the organizational and its responsibilities chats.
Which is changes.
As presented.
What changes?
As amended.
As amended, okay.
Because of the spelling check. Okay, as amended and-
I'll stick to the motion.
Mr. Morgan seconds it. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
You going to vote electronically?
You can.
I didn't catch it.
Yes, we are, sir.
Sorry.
I don't see it. Oh.
Get up that screen. Get back to the meeting.
Oh, go back to the meeting.
Yeah.
Okay.
Now, go to the top. Are you synced in?
I will.
Go to the top.
Unsynced.
Now, keep going, keep going, keep going up.
Oh, okay. Yeah, yeah. Okay. Got it.
Yours isn't working.
You're synced?
Mm-hmm. Synced.
Did she vote?
Logged in and synced. That's why.
Are you, you're synced?
Yeah, she is.
Oh, there you go.
Took like 12 clicks.
There we go.
Yep.
Very good. And now, is that time of year when we review the Massachusetts Association of School Committee resolutions? This is in advance to the conference. It's in Hyannis in November. And Mrs. Dargaping, can you give me the date?
November 4th. It's the 3rd, it's the 2nd to the 5th.
Wow.
It does seem to be a little bit earlier this year.
Yeah, it does.
It seems to be. I don't know if I'm accurate, but it does seem to be.
Yeah, because last year it was after Election Day, because I remember.
It's even before the election.
Okay. Well, so, we have four. And hopefully-
It's a low number. I mean, usually, there's seven or eight.
Yes, usually, there are seven or eight.
And Framingham doesn't have a resolution this year.
They're not here.
Because they typically have three or four.
Well, that's funny.
Mr. Begley, if you would like, I can actually walk through these or you can choose to do it, however you wish. I'm prepared to speak to each one of them if you would like me to.
Go right ahead. You'd like to, because you made a little recommendation.
I did. And I, just after walking through these, I did give my input. And again, it's only just for background and how I see it. The first resolution is really to take a look at the foundation budget structure. Back in 2015, the Foundation Budget Review Commission recommended some significant changes to the foundation budget formula. Those have not been adopted. And this resolution is really urging the State House to adopt those, those new guidelines. So, this is a perpetual issue with foundation calculations. And I think if you go back into mass resolutions for years, you can probably get a review of Chapter 70 as necessary. And I think this is something that most communities, all communities would like to see changed. Chapter 70 is just not keeping pace with the increase to school budgets. And for those of us in the community, those of you in the community that are not familiar with Chapter 70, Chapter 70 is state aid for education. And that's, this town of Plymouth receives roughly $26 million of state aid. We get what's after, what's left after charter schools get paid. So, you know, there is some level of discussion regarding the adequacy of that formula. And this is really looking to have that new recommendation adopted.
Any questions? Anybody got a little discussion going? Anybody have any points?
No.
And if there's no discussion, yes, Ms. Betts.
I move that we support the, we support the recommendation at the conference.
That's the resolution.
Resolution, sorry.
Resolution one. Okay. And do I have, and Mrs. Tracilli seconds it? Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Are you going to vote electronically?
I've only done that for a few years, I guess, you know. It's going to take a while.
Okay.
It's all right. Thank you, though. And do yours?
Says under discussion.
I can't, it says under discussion on mine. Let's see what happens here.
Sometimes it needs additional clicks.
Hit the sync button again.
Let me see if it goes up.
It's running the meeting.
What? Okay. Yeah, there it goes. Okay. This is the last one. It worked well. I don't know what happened.
All right, moving along. Resolution two is the tax reform ballot question. And that's urging the Commonwealth to look at introducing a ballot question to address the state's educational, social, and infrastructure systems need. And the attempt to do this is really looking at how we are treating our roads and bridges, our public school system, funding, and provide necessary supports for social and economic equity for residents of Massachusetts. This is really an initiative to raise tax for the top contributors in the Commonwealth. Basically, is to tax the wealthiest at a higher level to be able to raise funds, to be able to address some of the issues such as infrastructure, social, emotional, and education. I did, in my comments, make reference to the support of an opportunity to look at ways to raise funds. But I was very reluctant to say that we're going to look at a certain segment of the population to be dependent of those funds. So, again, I think it's a great idea to have a committee take a look at opportunities to raise dedicated funds to, you know, address some of these issues that we're experiencing. But I'm not sure that I would recommend targeting exactly what method that we would do that. So, that's my opinion, of course. I'm sure you'll have some level of discussion tonight.
I hope so. Anybody want to start a discussion on this one or?
Well, as I read it, it's to create a committee to study, to study the matter. It's not, it's not about the recommendations of the committee. It's the creation of a subcommittee. If I'm reading correctly, so if we vote in favor, we're saying, yes, we think this area needs to be studied more equitably. I think that's what the vote is.
For a ballot initiative.
I'm sorry?
For a ballot initiative.
Yes.
Yeah.
Yes.
I think so.
This is one of those, as a study or a ballot initiative, it's fine. For me, these are one of the ones where I think we go off the rails every year with some of the resolutions because it becomes so broad and sweeping that we kind of lose our way. And we all know that we'll probably never hear this resolution again, but-
The issue that I had with this was looking at the now-therefore-be-it-resolved section, which is near the bottom. And it's- which is near the bottom, and it says, "And seek additional revenue only from tax reform affecting the state's wealthiest residents," and I think...
Yeah, that's...
That...
It's already decided.
Already deciding how it's going to be.
You're looking at, you have a committee, but yet you're already deciding who's going to pay for this, you know, and that's the issue.
And it's really, I mean, this resolution is the establishment of the ballot to do that purpose.
Right.
So...
It's cute.
You're really voting for whether or not you agree the ballot should be, there should be a ballot asking this question.
And not the committee?
In this...
That part, yeah, that's right.
Who's the voting person? Because you could, it could be amended to leave that out, you know, that could be amended to it.
Yeah.
You're going to be representing us this year, right?
I think I'm second.
What?
She's first, and then I'm secondary.
Kim's the voting, and you're the alt.
Yeah.
Right.
Oh, I see.
Yes, I am. Totally.
By default, gotcha.
I know.
That can also be, that could be amended on the floor, so to remove that portion in what the committee have decided.
May I? Because I think it does say, it does say "may." It does say "may include." So I was interpreting that to mean that it doesn't necessarily mean it has to get that specific.
What should it say? Yeah.
What, where?
Right here. "Now therefore be it resolved that the Massachusetts Association of School Committees explore ways to promote social and economic equity through a ballot initiative whose purpose may include a state constitutional amendment, tax reform, protection of the state's neediest residents of all ages, and seeks additionally revenue only from tax reform affecting the state's wealthiest residents." I guess that's the part that we're questioning, is that last sentence there, where they've already concluded where it's going to come from.
Yeah.
Because I was thinking the subcommittee doesn't necessarily have to adopt any of those, because it says "may include."
Mm-hmm.
That's why I thought it made some sense to me.
That's correct.
It may include any of those things, but the revenue is only from tax reform.
But if, but if you...
Let the committee make that decision. Correct?
That's how I read it.
Let it on the floor?
Let, well, if a group is formed, the committee is going to come back and make those recommendations, which, in my view...
I think it's too strong to be there for them to even.
I think I'm agreeing with you, but what I'm saying is, it's the "may include" part is the string of things prior to the, how it's going to be funded. There's no "may" on the "how it's going to be funded" part.
That's right.
What they may or may not include in it is flexible, but how they're going to pay for any of it is not. They're flat out saying, "Revenue only from tax reform affecting the state's wealthiest..."
Point well taken.
I didn't read it that way. Okay.
Yeah, so that should be removed.
So, so we could, you know, we don't need to, it doesn't have to be a yea or nay. It could be a motion that will support it with this revision or something, or will direct our representative to get up and make a motion to amend.
Yeah.
And just leave it open at both ends. Leave it open as to "may include these things and may be funded in multiple ways."
Is that something that has to be done ahead of time? Or can you get up?
Otherwise it's a yea or nay. You're either for it or you're against.
You can do it on the floor, you can't.
Somebody, some other school committee might beat you to doing it, you know.
I didn't know.
That's what usually happens, is usually a long line of people. Mr. Morgan's been there a few times for us, and there's usually a line, a queue that sets up.
Okay.
So, be looking for a motion then to accept this?
I'll make the motion that we...
To direct our representative to make an amendment to this.
Yeah.
Resolution two?
To make or support amendment, an amendment to it if someone else does it, to, on the wealthy American part. I think that should be left out.
To, really, to leave the, how it's funded, open-ended.
Open-ended.
So it's open to discussion, just like "may include" for what's going into it is open to discussion.
Yep. I'll make that motion.
Where?
So we have a motion. Do we have a second, and then we'll do a discussion?
Yeah, I'm sorry.
We have a second for that motion with the amendment?
A second, so I can ask one question.
Go ahead. So we have a second if I, Ms. Badger?
So are we, we're striking and seek additional revenue only from tax reform, or are we going to add, or are we saying, if somebody adds, like, and may seek additional revenue from, get rid of the "only," from?
And explores, and how about, and explore ways to find additional revenue to fund it?
Okay. Okay.
Which "may include."
Which "may include."
You don't hit the right hand.
I'm joking.
That's not...
Okay.
Well, it's "may," not "only."
Just wanted to clarify what I was voting on.
Yeah.
So it's clear?
No.
Then, if there's no further discussion, we will go to our electronic voting.
Oh, you got it. I can't. Oh, now I can.
There it goes.
And so, five in favor, one opposed. And Mr. Morgan, did you want to offer while you're opposed?
I just, I just don't have faith that, I think there's an agenda here, as it's worded, and I just don't have faith in that the committee will be unbiased in terms of looking at the question and sources of revenue, so that's why I voted against it.
Okay. And I agree with you. I think a lot of these all have a very clear political agenda, and so that's why I thought we should change that wording a little bit. Charter school, resolution number three.
I move the recommendation, I'm just joking.
This is Resolution Three for charter school reform, and there are four points that are being made that are really the premise of the reform proposal through the resolution. The first one is the establishment of a strict guideline or regulations to require the charter schools enroll representatives, representative cross-sections of student residing within a school service areas. Basically, one of the complaints that we've heard over time is charter schools have a very specific enrollment background, and this would really try to look at having even demographics of students that are representative of descending districts. Two, reporting of accurate numbers of students who leave charter schools to return to the sending districts or districts of residence. There seems to be some level of inequities or inaccurate information on students that are accepted to the charters and students that get sent back to the sending schools. So that is one of the issues that has been brought up for quite some time. Number three, requiring the Department of Education to retain and report accurate data on enrollment students with learning disabilities, physical disabilities, and economic disadvantage, emotional disabilities, and status as racial and linguistic minorities. So really is taking a look at what those numbers are, like we do. That's what we have to report, very specific. So what are they? What specifically are they? And there needs to be some level of accurate reporting on that, and that seems to be one of the issues that people are concerned about. The next one has to do with Chapter 70, and it really is, Chapter 70 is how charter schools are funded. This point is really taking a look at how the charter school authorize, authorize in a community without its consent be funded fully by the Commonwealth. So if a community doesn't support it, and some communities haven't supported charter schools, but yet they still get Chapter 70 funding, if a community doesn't support it, this proposal would ask the state to fund it, not necessarily get funded through Chapter 70 dollars. And the next one is state funding in full, any mitigation funds created to offset the loss of state funding for students who become students in the charter school. So that's that continuation of funding, because right now, after the first year, that reimbursement for students at the local level for the existing public schools goes down every year. So how do we look at mitigating those funds that we lose to charter schools that actually, excuse me, charter students who, that vacuum is losing my attention here, gaining my attention, I should say. So it's really taking a look at how there are mitigating dollars for school districts that lose Chapter 70 when a, when a charter school is opened. So that's really one of the things that a lot of districts have been concerned about for quite some time.
Very good. Do we have any questions, or anything on this one? I would support this one. The only thing I didn't like really was the timing of it, since there is a ballot question, it seems like it's trying to get in front of the ballot question, so, but I would support it in principle, so. Do I have a motion on this one?
I'm sorry.
Thank you. You have to do that. I can't see you.
Yeah, it's okay. I, I move that we support Resolution Three.
I think it's four, isn't it?
No, three.
Three, yeah.
Okay, sorry.
And do we have a second? Mr. Morgan seconds it. Any further discussion? Then let us turn to our electronic voting. There we go. And now, number four.
This is the last resolution that MASC is presenting, and this is relative to convening a committee of organizations that support social and emotional well-being of students, and the proposal is to take a look at convening all of these groups with representatives to really make recommendations on how we, as a Commonwealth and educational entity, can really look at focusing these, our efforts on the epidemic that we have with social, emotional issues that we have within our schools across the Commonwealth. So this is a, if you've heard from our principals during budget time, social, emotional issues within our schools are at an all-time high. We see them increasing every year. The MASC resolution is to really convene the active groups that are assembled that support education in Massachusetts on the social, emotional side to come together and make some recommendations on how we can begin to look at combined resources or strategies on how we, as educational entities, can attack the problem.
The way I looked at this one was, I, once again, agree with everything in principle. The part I didn't like was what they kind of snuck into the first paragraph. Where they go, "Whereas the expansion of standardized testing to a wider range of students in these tests to establish ratings for schools and districts has contributed to the growing concern among educators that students are exhibiting complications of..." They slipped that in, and then, right after that, went back to the more generic, you know, support, family issues and everything. I didn't like the way that was slipped in, so it's kind of like getting, you're inadvertently agreeing with something you may not agree with, but you agree with the bigger principle of the whole thing. What just happened to my...
In my opinion...
It's really weird.
In my opinion, the issues we have that are most significant are not brought out through difficulties of assessment.
I'm sorry, say that again?
The biggest difficulties, the more important issues that we have in our schools with social, emotional difficulties, in my opinion, they're not being brought out by difficulty of assessments and things that provide a level of stress in that avenue. We have students that are dealing with some significant issues that, that are, I think they would be, our students would rise to the occasion if they felt that they were prepared to be in that position. Some of our students are not.
So I will make a motion that we instruct our delegate to vote in favor of Resolution Number Four.
And do we have a second?
Can we strike that?
You could amend the motion in a second.
Yeah, I was trying to amend the motion to strike the first "whereas" in the first paragraph, to leave it among students at all grade levels, and, and then "whereas," whereas, whereas, but not that one.
Well, first, Dr. Sorensen, are you open to change your motion?
No.
No. So now, do we have a second to that motion?
Could you say it again?
The motion is just to accept that yes or...
Minus the "whereas."
No, he didn't amend it. Now, once you second his motion, then there could be a motion to amend.
Okay, sorry. Just making sure.
So seconded by Ms. Badger. Now, do you want to make a motion to amend?
Yes.
The primary motion?
Yes. I want to just amend the first "whereas" in the first paragraph, the information that say, begins with that to the end, and then just have the other...
So just strike from "whereas" out.
Yes.
So as to support with the striking of that out, is there a second for the amendment to the primary motion?
Isn't that what you had suggested?
So what he did is necessary.
I did not suggest that. It was a comment.
Okay, it was a comment, though.
Yeah, I...
Okay. It was his comment, yeah.
Is there a second to Mrs. Burgess's amendment? Seeing no second?
So we only have one motion on the floor.
We only, we go back to the, so we go back to the primary motion?
And I'll speak to it.
Any further discussion? Yes, Dr. Sorensen?
A couple of things. I thoroughly agree with the need, as you all know, to, to put some, some resources or at least some focus on the social, emotional needs that our students come to school with. Every time those buses pull up, we have no idea what's getting off those buses and what happened to those children, you know, the night before. And so I really feel very, very strong that this is an area that must be studied and recommendations made back. And certainly, testing provides some, some stress to kids, but it's not even close, and as Dr. Maestis pointed out a few minutes ago, not even close to what these children are coming in with. And I would also add that I would be certainly willing to serve as a member of this committee on this larger committee if they're looking volunteers.
Definitely.
Any other discussion? Then I would point us to our electronic voting.
I got a message saying cruise control has been disabled due to network connection issues.
I didn't get that.
But I...
Well, your vote, your vote got registered.
But you voted. You got your vote.
Yeah. I didn't know, it was on cruise control, to be honest with you.
Well, we were concerned about you driving too fast.
You should be.
So that's all four of them. And Dr. Maestis is right, that's a much smaller number than prior years.
It's much smaller, nine, 10.
And usually, a lot of times, there's just a slight difference between a few of them, you know, so, so that's good. We're done with that. Before we move on, though, just as a question, how many people are going to the Hyannis Conference? Good. Because you're voting, so that's good.
And Kim is going. You asking, you asking questions?
And Kim is going?
Yes.
Good. I'm not going, did I? No.
No, I'm not.
Sometimes I sign up for the dinner.
I am, sign up for the keynote dinner. What's data net? Do we have that there? I'll look it up, or email me.
I have to say that I personally don't find it very productive.
No, not for me either, after all these years.
I just don't see, we don't, we don't, we never, whenever we go to them, there doesn't seem to be anything on the agenda where we're talking about children and how education should be improved, what the items should be that we should all be concerned about in the upcoming year. It just seems to be more of a gripe session than anything else. I just don't see anything productive coming out of it, so.
Other than that, I like it.
I appreciate you on stage.
Go look at the vendors, that's all. Now that's about it.
School fundraisers. Do we have any questions or feedback on school fundraisers? They all seem to be going...
There's a lot going on.
Okay? No issues, right?
Catalogues are coming home.
Candy bars for you.
No candy bars yet?
There's more candy bars. There's more candy bars.
Well, I thought somebody was going to, you think, after I said that at that meeting, you would think that, like, people would be ringing my doorbell. you would think that like people would be ringing my doorbell with selling me candy, but...
And alcohol going out tomorrow night.
That's a safe door to door.
So now, reports and proposals from committee members. Anybody have anything to tell us about? Yes?
I just have my usual reminder about the Alumni Association meeting, which will be this Thursday, October 20th, at six in the RE/MAX office. Hopefully we'll fill the room.
In the RE/MAX office?
Yeah. In Benny's, the Benny's parking lot.
Oh.
They have that, the building that used to be like Bank of America, I think it was.
Okay.
We meet in the conference center in there.
All right, the, if there's, were there any other that I missed? No. So PYDC reports, I didn't attend the last meeting, but...
I did.
You did? Good, thank you. Can you give us an update? Thank you.
I actually won. Early in the morning or not. Well, the biggest thing that we had on the ballot, on the thing I could see was about question four with Vinnie DiMascio making his point about the marijuana question, and people should vote no, because it's used damages and impairs cognitive function, it can cause mental health issues like anxiety, mood, and psychotic disorders, it can be addictive and lead to other drug use. Fifty percent of the market, he said that would be edibles, which is like gummy bears and Pop-Tarts and brownies and all that sort of thing, and they have up to 95% of the THC in them. And so that's really bad. You don't know how much is in the brownie you're eating, so it's really bad. And the Massachusetts tax is going to be 10%. And in other words, they'll be paying 10% to Massachusetts. Colorado is 27%, and Washington's is 44%. So this means we're giving higher percentage of profits to the merchants, and the 27% tax hasn't been enough money to fund the issues that it's brought to Colorado. So the other tax dollars that we will have to spend will have to go to that. I don't know where it comes from, but whatever. And then how will that tax money be used? And there's been no designation for where the money will go. It hasn't been thought out. It's the regulatory processes, what he was saying, would be causing so much of the problem. And I was trying to, oh, and about drug driving, because there's no test like for alcohol to test anybody that's drug driving. And people can grow, he's going up to 12 plants at home. There's no education dollars for our kids in our school. And it says that on that regulatory process, it allows for 15 members on the board, but nine of them are from the industry, so it really doesn't benefit us too much. So the state is going to lose dollars, and Colorado said it was $45.8 million to regulate it. So it's going to be a big cost item. Healthy Plymouth, what is her name, Judy Vigna?
Vigna.
Vigna? Ah, okay, that's what I... She did a very good report on the Healthy Plymouth update, and she said that North Plymouth was going to be the focus, and that they're working too with Reverend Stott from the church out there. And they're putting together a program to really focus on it in the north end of town. So they'll be updating us on that. I'm trying to see what's... The, oh, this is it. What they've started in the Plymouth Court, I have a flyer on it, is the Hope Chest. And the Hope Chest is a clothes closet, and it was just for people that were on probation in the juvenile court, but now they have opened it to the public for teens and up. They don't, and they're looking also for donations for that. They don't want to get into the children's clothing because there's so much of it out there. And so that would be my report for tonight. Thank you.
And now we have the Building Committee. Do we have any?
The meeting was put off till next week.
Next, till Thursday, this Thursday.
Twenty, the 20th, yeah.
Yeah, they didn't have a court, so. And we will be, is it?
Tomorrow night.
Tomorrow night at 5:00 at South High School, we're going to have a tour.
Is it 5:00 or 5:30?
Five, 5:00.
Okay, thank you.
Before it gets dark.
And you were not able, you're not able to make that one. Did you have another date you wanted someone to try to set something up?
I'm going to look at some possible dates.
I'm worrying that it's going to be like the day we cut the ribbon.
Yeah, I'll be there for that.
You're going to be there.
But no, I'm going to reach out to Tom Finnegan, and he had off, I think he's offered to get me a tour.
Private tour, good.
Private tour, more or less.
Just a comment, I'm actually refereeing a game that starts, I think, at PCIS at 3:30, so I will join you a little bit later. I'm planning to come right from the field.
Okay. And just, we're going to start on the far right and move over, so.
Yeah, where do we come and meet?
You can meet at the construction trailer, right up on the site, and then Tom will have hard hats and just wear good footwear. He's gotten a little softer about the footwear, but, but yeah, right at 5:00.
If we can't make it, we should set up directly with Tom?
Yeah, Tom would reach out to you and set up at private time. Yep.
The other question?
I'll be at the call desk.
Building Committee's coming too tomorrow night.
Have we notified?
College Board starts at 6:00.
Have we notified?
I'll just be there, 5:00 to set up. Pam Hagler. I have a booth. I don't have anybody.
Have we notified Pam Hagler of how many were coming from? Yes, because I got a notice today from her that only two people were coming, and she was looking...
Yeah, she...
Maybe it was the building only.
It was the Building Committee.
She didn't say, okay. So she knows how many, yeah.
Yeah, she did that today and sent a final reminder and then talked to Tom.
All right.
So she was the Nancy of the...
Just wanted to make sure that they didn't cancel it because of that.
No. Hope it's on.
Got to pay some bills.
Mrs. Frye, the appointments, leaves of absence, and resignations?
Um, yes, we have had one certificated appointment since our last meeting, three coach and advisor appointments, four classified appointments, one leave of absence, and six resignations.
Very good. Thank you. And now Ms. Badger, the accounts payable warrant?
Trying to stay joined, but I'm not doing a really good job. Never mind, I'm moving it myself. All right. Whereas school committee members have provided with a copy of the cost center transfer and transaction summary report and warrant for review, I move that the Plymouth School Committee accept and approve the reports and accounts payable warrant S10-2016 dated October 20th, 2016, in the amount of $1,039,520.09 as presented.
Very good, I have a motion. Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
Mrs. Burgess seconds it. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Nope.
Please vote electronically.
We had a...
A syncing issue?
Who was the, who moved it?
I did.
Badger seconded it.
Okay, I was sleeping, so it was my fault.
It happens on occasion.
It's because I talked slower this time, that's why.
The melodic tone of your voice is kind of...
Lulling you to sleep.
Okay. Cut it? Good. All right, then. September 12 minutes.
I'll move the minutes to be accepted as presented.
Moved by Dr. Sorensen, seconded by Mrs. Burgess. Any further discussion? Although, please turn to your voting. Very good.
In the hangover here at the end of the...
And now September 19. Minutes from September 19, Mrs. Badger, sorry.
Sorry, that's my mom. I move that we accept the September 19 minutes as presented.
Do I have a second? Mr. Morgan seconds it. Any further discussion? Please turn to your voting. Here we go. And that was pretty good. We moved through that pretty good. We had it scheduled today.
That was good.
It must be the electronic voting that's...
So without objection, then, we are adjourned at 8:19.